We're live, okay. Good evening, everyone. Call this meeting, committee, the whole meeting to order. And we have moved by Richard Marquand, second by Margaret Fancy, the council approved the agenda. As amended, that would be to add the blue box program thing. All in favor? Garry's? So, start with the report, your report to council.
Okay. Start with the roads. The roadside brushing is still ongoing. James is still out with the brushing head. We got some really good feedback from the bus companies, Marsh Roads, Down Valley Canoe, June Town. Got some really good feedback from the bus drivers, actually. We're out today and it got some good compliments. Roadside mowing was completed, the third round, so a lot of other townships and municipalities only do one, so we, we, yep. The stop bars were painted in the village, completed for the paving part. Removed the posted zoning changes on Quabbin and Parkway for the October 6th meeting. We had to deliver some checks to contractors in the business due to the postal strike and there were some notices for taxes.
Jennifer, do you know if that number six, did that have any impact? People coming in?
Yes, actually, one lady was like, we delivered them and then one lady came right in and paid and she had like a...
Oh, good, okay.
Yeah, so, yeah. Played disaster relief grant from June, so I haven't heard back from the province. Tormack's still coming back. They had a three or four days of leftover cleanup, so, due to deer hunting and they had a couple emergencies at the Lennar County. So, I told them, you can't go to Kirk Graves, can't do the county, he has to do us first, but, no, so that's hopefully next week, so that'll be all completed. Had to put new batteries in the 550, it wouldn't start the other day. Oil change service for the 250, Old River Road repaired some of the potholes. Remembering state banners have been installed, October 27th, that was part of a grant.
Can I, just for a second? I've had so many people compliment us on those banners. You know, even when I was in Athens at the lodge last week, somebody comes, come up to me and say, oh, they look great, so you did a good job.
So, yeah, as soon as we got them, we got them up, so, and that was Tormack. Tormack was here and they assisted with us, so. So maybe next year we'll come up with a schedule and, and, you know, from...
Yeah, plus year one, so they do can kind of figure it out.
Yep. And then coincide with our holiday banners as well, so. Cronkwoods, we had a new entry permit, a new culvert installed. The new truck is supposed to be delivered on Friday, but there were some complications, hopefully this week. So, it's gotta get safety knee tested in Ontario, but hopefully we can get it on.
So we just bought a new truck that we have to pay to get it safetied and everything?
Yep, it's standard. I've had two texts from other townships. LTI wanted to know what we paid for it. T Valley Township is interested in too, they just can't believe, I actually got the text saying they can't believe what we paid for it, so. And Ontario, I don't think, has to build an F-600, so, whereas this place had them right on the lot, ready to go, so. So, and, and that was coincided with Westport, so that's how we, we have, so, Westport does their village and their subdivisions and stuff, and they, they love that little truck, so.
Did you see the note on the check where I signed? Is it, I have to be the first to drive it?
Okay.
Did you see that?
Yep. Okay, it's just, you need a G license, so, yeah, you're good to go. Just the facility stuff, just our regular stuff. The monthly inspections, the Janaries were operated, the first aid kits had to get checked because it was a quarterly. We had a cremation in October. We ordered material for the work bee for the gazebo to replace some rotten boards.
That number five, that gazebo, excuse me, have you got, or will you have something in the next year's budget for painting and staining that?
I can, yes.
Yeah, because...
That's usually done by the coach house volunteers.
Well, it should be done.
They're the ones that are fixing the floor right now. And it says here, we're calling, move the stones over for the work bee. Reg Hunt has spent the last two weeks by himself on his hands and knees doing that.
Yep.
For the coach house.
The only reason I ask is because the deck, we could have gotten more life out of the deck had it been maintained.
Well, it was, because I...
It wasn't stained for the last several years.
Well, it was, because I sanded it myself on my hands and knees and then we stained it the next day, but the stain doesn't last because it's outside.
Yeah, just, just wearing tare.
Go ahead, Carson.
So the easiest way to do that is when we're doing the budget for the coach house, because we do have volunteers who will do the work, we'll just make sure that that money is in the coach house budget, so that can be done.
I just, because my, my deck at my house is older than the one at the coach house, which we replaced, and it's, and it's in almost perfect condition, because I stain it every three years. So, just as long as we maintain it, it'll last, that's all.
Yeah, like Gail said, we had to move the, Reg requested some of the stones. We had, they were in the back of the shop, and then, so we brought them over and then Naps actually budded up the paving and to the walkway, so everything's nice and tight there. Furnaces got all serviced for the winter. Couple repairs to the furnaces had, as per the work order, so they were tidied up. The municipal, in part of the work order, the municipal furnace is due for replacement, and it's quoted and supposed to be installed next week. The community center parking lot flower bed was dug out, it was requested by the Young and Bloom, so it's all, they wanted some, like a new flower bed back there, so the guys helped out with that, so. And the Begonia bush was requested too by the Young and Blooms, it was dug out as well, so. Coach house paving and the parking lots, stoned us and trails were completed in October 28th, that's, that's all grant work, so, that's all tidied up, so, to make it accessible. Replaced the ceiling fans at the community center as requested, they were older than, I guess, yeah, so we had them replaced, a little safer and quieter. And then we installed the, we ordered the baby change table for the information center washroom, so it's installed and good to go. Landfill stuff, emptied bins, recycling, compacting with cover. The entrance way was paved, the counties, Marvin spoke with the resident beside the entrance way there last week, saying that the counties are supposed to be coming back to tie in everything and tough, fluffing everything up, but nothing's gonna get done in the next two weeks, so.
Roger, if I may, on that topic, she called me today and I stopped by.
She's phoned everybody.
And I, and I know, let me finish, please, I know that the county's coming back, but the problem isn't what the work the counties did, it's the water that's running off our entrance way, from the fence, all that asphalt, down and then goes across. So we need to put some kind of channel on each side of our driveway to force the water, so it doesn't go all the way to the end and then across our driveway, because that's what's happening.
There's already a drain, probably three quarters way up, catches the water.
I stopped there Friday myself, looked at it on my way to Athens, and there's a slight slope, a slight slope that goes towards this house on the, on the north side of the driveway. But they're coming back to...
To fluff it up, and I think the counties went above and beyond as to what they needed, what they paved is, anyways.
Well, the numbers is secondary, we just don't want the water going into our basement, we're gonna get that fixed, yeah, because as long as it goes to the ditch.
There's a drain in between the two properties, so it's gonna catch it.
When they go out there, check it again, just when you're out there with them. On the north, on the house on the north side?
Both sides, I guess.
She just sent another picture 10 minutes ago.
It's raining out. James and I took a landfill operations training course. It was actually like a safety landfill, it was an afternoon, so James and I took that. And then James, the operator, repaired all the potholes in throughout the landfill. The rec park, weekly, we always inspect the trail to make it safe. Baseball, there was that fundraiser tournament. The Foy Public School tournament was on October 22nd, the Catholic school soccer tournament was on October 23rd. The operator dropped off the donation of the proceeds of the canteen. I'm not sure what that was approximately, but...
I think she said around between $1,100 and $1,200, I believe, yeah. And it was, I, I was going, just going to comment on that, I think we need to recognize that in some way, that donation, because it was really generous and generous time as well.
That's donation in cash, but all of that time was donated as well.
Yeah, she and her daughter, yes, spent the summer doing it, so.
Yeah. The master rec plan's ongoing and you guys are having a...
Can I just back up a bit on that? Can we get a scroll or something, a thank you for, please? We can have her come in for one council meeting, whatever it is, early, because it is early, 6:30, and present it to them as a thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they were invited to the volunteer event but couldn't come, so this is, that would be a great gesture, yeah.
Alright.
As you know, the master rec plan's ongoing and in the works, there's a presentation tonight. We're working on another grant for the rec trail, as I was informed.
That's a definite maybe.
Yeah.
We're looking at different, as we discussed last month with the, our last meeting about the grow grant and various options, so. 20% of the grant can be spent on capital, so we have to look at the numbers and see what's affordable, the fences and other piece, and whether we can do both, so you'll know by tomorrow because it's due Wednesday, but we've been working very hard on it.
Something else, just received another ad on the sticker of the ODR, so.
Could you, could you explain what that means?
ODR, outdoor rink.
New ad sticker on dasher at ODR.
It's a new advertising on the dashers, dasher boards at the outdoor rink.
In the arenas, you see all this advertising on the boards, that's what that is.
Yep.
Okay, maybe...
We're getting there, we're getting some, actually I had another...
Maybe a little bit of English would have helped.
Only hockey people to understand that.
Yeah.
Exactly. Colin, how many does that give us on there now?
I think we're... We're probably, that one side's done, starting on the back end.
So which done means six, seven, eight, four, eight, nine?
At least eight or yes. Yeah, and then there's a couple more.
Just so the public are aware, we get money for that advertisement that's on, and it's money that's brought in annually for a fundraiser towards the rec park, so.
Yep, 100 bucks a year for advertising and the commercial or whoever wants to advertise.
So which side of the rink does the cameras, do the cameras view from, so?
I don't, it's, it's, it's when their kids are out playing and they're taking selfies and it's on Facebook, right? It's free advertising, so, it goes a long way. The pickleball net's been removed for the season, so.
I have a question?
Yes.
The Santa Claus parade's coming up.
Yes, I have that on my marker board.
We'll need the sleigh down. How long is your block trailer?
Oh, jeepers, is it 16 feet? You guys use it every year.
I know, but we're, we're adding more deer.
Well, he's only got eight.
Yeah, we've only had five.
Do you want me to measure it tomorrow and shoot an email?
What?
I'll measure it tomorrow and shoot an email, just for the...
Because we're gonna have, we're gonna have nine deer.
Okay.
Okay, you got the eight that belonged to Santa Claus and then you got Rudolph, so we're gonna have to figure out a two-story.
Well, maybe, maybe, maybe two of those deer will have to walk behind the trailer.
No, I have not, because it's the 25th, these yahoos want to do it on Tuesday night fire haul, okay, so, I don't know.
Really, the question is, can the sleigh and everything come down on a Tuesday and stay down till the Sunday?
So, we've got to...
Have the space.
I was gonna work this out with Colin, okay, which is what the committee asked me to do.
Okay. I'll measure that.
Get the stuff down.
Yep.
Gotta look at the length of the trailer, and then we have to figure out a time when we can go and put, put the whole thing together. But the, the big question was, can we tie up the garage for a few days?
That one bay will be, that, sorry, that one bay will be fine, like as always, so, yeah, we'll give you guys that one bay or whatever it is, so.
The one bay, okay, alright, thank you.
So I don't think there's any, any threat of the sleigh flying anywhere until the 25th of, or 24th of December?
I don't know, it's a very, it's a very airworthy sleigh, so it could take off at any moment. We actually have to screw it down to the wagon to make sure it doesn't take off.
And any recommendations for the holiday banners to be installed, like you want them up for the parade?
Oh, for sure.
That week?
Yeah, yeah, for sure, yeah, yeah. And we ordered some more.
Yes, please, yeah, there was some that were just destroyed, so, thank you.
So, Ketchum is the supplier that we're using, okay?
That's who, perfect, okay, right on.
So, when your action list?
Thank you. I don't, the action list, yeah, I have a separate information on the...
Okay, we'll talk about that in a second here, but the CN report, I guess, on Wednesday coming, this, after tomorrow's committee, the whole meeting at the counties. And the report on, monthly report on construction. And the work in the crossing was supposed to be done in September. And it hasn't been, obviously. So the report, and I'll double check Wednesday, is that they are waiting for confirmation or word back from CN before they can start their work. So I'm gonna confirm that on, on, on Wednesday and then I'll contact CN again.
Why do they need confirmation from CN?
Well, CN told us we had to do it. I know, but it has to be mon, train schedules monitored and all this other stuff, so.
They wait too much longer, we're not gonna be able to do the sidewalks because it'll be too cold.
It won't happen this, you know, it won't happen this year, no.
There goes the budget.
So, I don't know, it was carried over.
Yeah, to spice up the rest of it.
That's, that's okay, it's there, but I'll find out for sure on Wednesday, I saw it on the agenda today, so, they're on the weekend. Another CN hiccup.
I'd like to just go back to one of the action items?
Yep.
Okay, so we, we had our meeting.
Yep.
We took the fire department out there.
Yep.
So this action item needs to be updated, right? Because remember I talked to you about it, what we thought was gonna be done, wasn't done, and you said you were gonna, you were still working on it?
Yeah, we are working on it.
Okay, because we need to be able to get the fire trucks in behind those piles.
Yep.
We couldn't even get behind them ourselves.
We're moving them as it's, it, like, like when we, we had it done and completed in May, we had everything grinded up, and, and when we scheduled that, we had everything moved and everything was grinded up and flat, so you guys could have just drove in there.
Okay, here's, here's the thing, you cannot program fires.
I know.
Okay, you can't say, oh, well, if you were here last week, it would have been fine.
But, that's, we had it.
Okay, so this has to be, and that was the point of our notice to you, was that we need to be able to get in and around those piles.
Yep.
To put a fire that could accidentally happen. So we, we, we could not do that. So could you update your action item with, that that has not been done, and when will it be done?
Good. It's, it just doesn't happen in...
Yeah, I know, I know, but we, we...
I had, I had it completed in May as when we were scheduled to do it, so.
Do you need like a road base in behind, so that, that's...
We need truck access.
Right, so do you need a road base in behind so it stays permanently ready and available if you need to get in there?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we have, the way it has worked in the past, if there's been a fire in one of the piles, we have to get back here and throw water over, like Niagara Falls, to try and hit it. We can't even see what we're doing. Okay, so what we asked was, could the piles be in such a way that we could circumnavigate them with the fire truck to be able to get the fire with, because it's on this side?
So you need a road, is what you're asking?
I don't care if it's a road, as long as it's passable by a fire truck. The code, the fire code does say, and it even outlines how many meters you have to give to a fire truck to be able to access, like, we, we had to use this in Brown's Bay. They had to, for the fire lane, they had to go so many meters to allow our fire trucks to get in there. Well, it's the same thing, we need to have so many meters, because we don't want to scratch our trucks, but, but that's besides the point. We, we cannot get in there.
Okay, so it was there, but then you got all the storms and everything else to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and there's, there's a whole great big spot in the center there, which I know has got a lot of brush and whatever in it, but if you would take that out. It would solve the problem.
Yeah, it'll be gone, it'll probably be gone this week.
That road would be around the periphery of that centered section, so we could go wherever we wanted with the fire trucks.
This, this is the first year I've heard of that, but I can understand what you're doing, so it's never been done before, right now?
No, no, and it's been a problem for a while.
Well, obviously, because this is the first year I've heard of it, so it's been at least 20 years, anyway, it'll be fixed.
So, I'm, I'm just gonna get this clear, so when you go around to the brush pile, you want to move the brush pile from where it is now, it would be south of where it is, in the middle there? Is that where you want to put it? Because there's nowhere else for it to go?
Well, that's what we recommended, but I mean, it's up to Colin to decide ultimately where he wants it.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out where you're gonna put the brush.
On all sides, because we can't, we can't put out a fire by throwing water over the top of it.
I think that's, either that has to happen or there has to be a road base put in behind the pile that we have, so cost wise, I think it would be simpler to move the brush, move the dirt and move the brush in the center of the road. And you've got a road base there.
That's what we thought, because you have a, a good road.
Right.
And we could use that road, as long as the stuff was over there.
We, yeah, we're, it just doesn't...
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes. So, the recommendation, that council approved the bylaw to enter into the blue box service agreement and blue box curbside service agreement with circum materials for the period of January 1st, 2026, to December 31st, 2028. Front of Young will continue with the same services for the 2026 and 18, existing processes that our residents are familiar with, and to include expanded recyclable materials identified by the province, and then the list is attached for your viewing.
Marvin sent the list out earlier, or last week, you should say, everybody's had a chance to look at it, and they worked on between the two, three of us, Jennifer and Margaret and Colin, who worked for, it seems like decades. So one interesting piece you received from LTI was...
Yeah, so, the, the, the compensation piece was, basically, we kicked back and said we, we weren't, they offered us an original amount and we kicked back and said we weren't taking that, so they countered offered and... We're, we're close to what originally, what was offered, like, from the first contract. LTI, I just got an email from LTI. This is what LTI has said during, during their last meeting with circum materials, what happens if LTI cannot come to an agreement? And their response was that our residents would have to be using a neighboring township depot that were in operation. So if they couldn't come to an agreement, they have three, they have three depots, so if they didn't come into a, an agreement. They'd have no recycling, nowhere to go, they'd be coming, so, and then I just got, I got an email from LTI this morning and they, they offered them the exact same amount as what we have, because of the same size of, so.
So, can we not put out something to the neighboring municipalities across Lees and Grebel who are all battling with cyclical motions to, this is a province initiative which is supposed to make everything easier. It's not supposed to be something that causes our ratepayers. The way I'm looking at this, they started at a price, they decreased what they want to pay to have our depot running, so it's costing our ratepayers more money. Should we not be doing something to the province and say, as a group from Lees and Grebel, this is what you said was gonna be a better process, and it's now costing us more money?
Every, every municipality's done that, at least verbally, at least in emails, because I know Kingston has, I know North Grenville has, LTI has, and I know we have, we've made those comments.
Yeah.
I, I do think, listen, they're not listening to little municipalities like us individually. I don't know whether banding together at this point would do anything, I think, I think, it's, we talked about this, I think, a few meetings ago, approaching other municipalities. The province isn't moving on certain things, and so we can accept the agreement, and it is less, and, but, we're, we're not gonna get any more, we could sit there till the cows come home, and it's, I think, I mean, the fact that larger municipalities are getting the same amount we are, is kind of interesting too, you know, because it's, it's not a lot of money, really. The, the, their counter argument is that they're looking after the blue boxes in the village and that they're looking after the...
Recycling.
The recycling in the village. It's still not the same as, certainly not near what we were getting before. So, I, it, we did mention, you know, I, I'm surprised, actually, that there hasn't been more banding together, although there has been a lot of lobbying at the provincial, if you read the newspapers, various municipalities are pushing back. I think same size and same structured municipalities, it makes more sense if we work together, because our issues aren't the same as Kingston, for example, you know? The other, the other piece that's in this, that where there is some compromise on, on the part of the province, is the commercial and the residential. That, we were worried about what was going to happen with commercial recycling coming to the depot, it's almost like they're closing their eyes, and as long as we pass a resolution that says that we are gonna do this to the best of our capacity, then they're happy with that motion. So, that's the other side of it, I, I'm, I'm torn, I'm, I'm not disagreeing... I, I'm, I'm torn, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you, Carson, I just, at this point, I don't know, Roger, if this has been discussed at joint services, because it seems to me when the reality hits on January the first, it, you know...
It, it has been formally, I know in, in the, in the coffee room, people were complaining about it, everybody's complaining about it, but hadn't, hadn't been formally on the, on the agenda at joint services. And everybody's complaining about the same thing. But they're, they weren't complaining so much about the cost or what we're being paid, their main complaint was the, the commercial side of it.
Yeah, and we, I think we've dodged a bullet on that one, I mean, we, we've had many conversations and I think that the compromise is probably going to benefit us more than what was suggested initially, so...